Virtual School Board of Trustees, I call to order the quarterly meeting of the board. First, I want to thank the fellow board members, Dr. Algués and the entire Florida Virtual School Leadership Team for the significant work in preparation you have already committed to today's meeting. Also applaud the ongoing hard work, innovation, and determination of our Florida Virtual School teachers and staff, and they are important. And I thank each and every one of you for the dedication you have shown on a daily basis to the students and the families that we serve. With that stated, let's proceed to the roll call. Mr. Moore, will you please call roll?
Dr. John Watret.
Present.
Ms. Linda Ryder.
Present.
Mr. Edward Poswoli.
Present.
Mr. Robert Conerens.
Thank you, we've got a quorum as usual, I appreciate everyone being here. So next, I'd like to open the floor for any opening remarks from our co-chair and the fellow board members. Madam Co-Chair, Ms. Ryder? Any comments?
No, just good morning, everyone.
Board Member Connor Arons.
Same, good morning, good job for prepping us for today, thank you.
And Board Member Poswoli.
Good morning, everyone, I hope everybody had a happy and healthy Thanksgiving.
We did, and the same here. Again, just to emphasize, thank you again for all the prep work that you put together, teams put together, it really is appreciated, and the board docs really works well to go through all the stuff, so thank you. So turning to the minutes, we have for review minutes from the board's September 14th, 2021 quarterly meeting, November 10th, 2021 special meeting, and the board's November 10th, 2021 agenda review workshop meeting. Is there a motion to adopt the recommendations and approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Is then? Any discussion of the minutes, any comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. So motion passes unanimously, so the minutes are approved. Next, the board will receive public comment. Before we begin, I would ask speaker to observe the following ground rules pursuant to the board's bylaws. Public comment should be pertinent to board agenda items. Persons who wish to speak during the public hearing on item 10.1 are asked to reserve comments until the opening of that hearing. Each speaker is limited to two-minute comment period and cannot take time to another speaker, yield time to another speaker. If the speaker runs out of time, then written comments may be submitted. Speakers must state their first and last name for the record before delivering their comments. Speakers may ask questions, but board members and Florida Virtual School officials are not required to respond. Rather, it shall be their prerogative to respond, and the board chair will take up any such responses after the public comment period. Further speakers should note that this meeting, including the public comment period, is being recorded. Thank you. Operator, are there any members of the public who have called in and wish to speak to the board?
We have no callers.
Thank you, so this concludes the public comment period. We next turn to section four of our agenda, items 4.1 through 4.6 for CEO comments, reports, and presentations. Dr. Algués, I'll pass it over to you.
Thank you very much, Board Chair Watret. We have six items to present to you today. 4.1, the first item is the ESSR update, or Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund under the American Rescue Plan Act. Each local educational agency or LEA must develop, make publicly available on its website, and seek public comment on its instructional continuity plan. In addition, each LEA must develop, make publicly available on its website, and seek public comment on a plan for the use of its ESSR funds. In order to meet these requirements, FLVS will be posting a link on our website and sending a survey to stakeholders, including parents, students, and staff, with links to allow for meaningful consultation and to obtain public comment. So I wanted to just give you that information, that's upcoming, and it will be placed on our website. Item 4.2 is the FLVS unaudited financial report, which is attached there. Each year, we are charged with preparing an annual financial report, and it was transmitted to the Florida Department of Education as required by the specified due date. The financial statements will be audited by an outside accounting firm of MSL PA, and those will probably be done around January or February to bring to the board at the next quarterly meeting for your formal approval of. 4.3 is the quarterly CEO report that we do every quarter to keep the board abreast of the finances. The following charts provide a snapshot of our financial information, including year-to-date completions and year-to-date actuals and projections, to give you an idea of where we stand fiscally. The information is presented graphically for the quarter ended September 30th, 2020 of the prior year, and 2021 for the current year, using the blue and red bars. The year-to-date information is also presented as of June 30th, 2020, the prior year, and projected for June 30th, 2021, using green and purple bars. So again, the blue and red bars that you see are prior and current year quarter, and the green and purple bars are year-to-date last fiscal year and projected year-to-date this fiscal year. In some instances, the quarterly or year-to-year or year-to-date information is not relevant, so it's been omitted, or for one of the examples you see on the scale, it's so low that this scale right here, this one here, that's very hard to see the comparison. So in this graph, this chart shows year-to-date completions for three categories: FLVS Flex, the virtual learning labs, and FLVS Full Time. For the quarter ended September 30th, completions for FLVS Flex totaled 117,521, shown in red, and that's a slight decrease from the prior year of 125,615, which is shown in blue. The actual completions for FLVS Flex as of June 30th, 2021 were 578,030, as shown in the green, and compared to projected completions by June 30th, 2022, 562,428, as shown in the purple. So you see there's a slight decrease projected. Completions for virtual learning labs for the quarter ended September 30th have increased from 828 to 1342. However, we're projecting a slight decrease in completions in the virtual learning labs at the end of the year, from 40,716 on June 30th, 2021, to projected 32,572 on June 30th, 2022. There have been very few completions in the FLVS Full Time as of September 30th, as expected for this early in the school year, for the full-time program. FLVS is projecting an increase in the FLVS Full Time completions from 139,602 on June 30th, 2021, to 149,11 as of June 30th, 2022. This next chart presents beginning fund balances, revenues, and expenditures, and obligations, and the ending fund balance for the general fund. The beginning fund balance is 100 million, and revenues to do September 30th have increased from 43 million in the prior year, blue bar, to 79 million in the current year, which is the red bar. Revenues at fiscal year-end are expected to increase from 268 million, green bar, in the prior year, to 311 million in the current year, the purple bar. And the year-to-date expenditures through September 30th, 2020, were 53 million compared to 63 million at September 30th, 2021. Year-to-date expenditures are projected to be 269 million from 259 million in the prior year. Obligations represent commitments for expenditures and have increased as of September 30th from 152 million to 178 million. And as a result of the increase in revenues with a corresponding but not a large increase in expenditures, the fund balance is projected to increase from 100 million to 142 million by June 30th, 2022. And this last chart shows a beginning fund balance, revenue expenditure, obligations, and ending fund balance for our enterprise funds. Again, those are franchises and out-of-state revenue. These funds include our tuition-based schools, county virtuales. Beginning fund balance is 65 million. Revenues to date through September 30th have declined from 34 million in the prior year, the blue bar, to 25 million, the red bar, in this current year. As a result, the revenues at year-end are projected to decline from 81 in the prior year to 56 million in the current year, the purple and green bars, green and purple bars respectively. Year-to-date expenditures have increased slightly from 3.1 million to 2020 to 3.2 million in 2021, and the expenditures for fiscal year-end are also expected to increase from 27.5 to 30. Obligations have increased from 9.3 September 30th to 13 million as of September 30th, 2021, and no transfer out have been recorded as of September 30th, 2021, but total transfers for the fiscal year to date are expected to increase from 6 million fiscal year 21 to 12 million this year. The amount of these transferred is controlled by FLVS, the transfers in and out, and set during the budget process. As a result, the ending fund balance is expected to grow from 65 million to 79 million.
Good.
The next item we have is update on our accreditation efforts.
Dr. A, can you go back to that slide just for a second?
Sure thing. Which one?
That one, the enterprise fund slide. The decrease in revenues, is there an explanation?
Yeah, partly it's because a lot of the states have banned virtual learning, so our revenues and sales out there are reduced. That's part of it. The year before was COVID, and everybody was scrambling to get something virtual. This year, they're still doing it, but a lot more push to get the kids in physical schools. So even though our revenue has declined, it's still quite a bit above what it was the year before last, prior to COVID. And we're not done, we're still making inroads here, I think, with some other states.
Do we see a permanent impact on COVID? I know that, obviously, the big rush to have virtual provided when COVID was in full force, but assuming we're returning to normal, that's kind of an assumption, but have you seen any drastic change legislatively or executive orders from other states that impact upon our virtual business? And is there a plan to attack that and making sure that we're meeting the market needs, and the local state governments are also meeting the market needs?
Right, so yeah, we have our external affairs office looking at those states that have made those changes. For example, in the Northeast, a lot of it has occurred. Just Monday, last Monday, not this Monday, the week before, I had met with a Connecticut, a distance learning commission. They are looking statewide to see what is the best way forward virtually. They had an awful experience with the remote learning, as many people did. So they invited us and one other state to discuss what we do in order to see if there's some things that they can do to get their state off the ground virtually in a more productive way than they had in the past. So there, a lot of questions they had were about ESE students primarily, and they were very surprised at what we do and the panoply of what we offer compared to the other state that was presenting. And they'll, you know, they'll be reaching out to us again in the future to see if there's any way that they can work with us. And so we're trying to do that with other states as well, trying to educate them the difference between emergency remote learning and what proper virtual schooling is, effective virtual schooling.
Mr. Chair, I have one other question, if I can. On the expenditure side, the expenditures look like they went up, what, about 10% from one year to the next. Most of those expenditures are those teachers?
Yes, we had a big increase in our global schooling requests here. We had a very large school district from Tennessee, and as a result, we had to use a lot more teachers, and when they're global school, we use our teachers, our content, and our platform, as opposed to the global services where we just lease our content. So yes, we had to hire, the majority of that is in personnel.
And is that a lag effect of where we're spending the money, but we haven't received the revenue yet from the students that those teachers are?
That's partially, yes. We try to get the money as soon as possible. We charge them as soon as they start using it, but we do have a true-up at the end of the year in order to go ahead and charge them for what they actually did end up using as opposed to what they were expecting to use. Also, I think it bears to be mentioned that from the year before COVID, we were expecting maybe a 25% increase in revenue. This is quite a bit more, so we're ahead of where we thought we would be here and within the state as well. The general fund, you saw that there was a $40 million. We kind of stayed the same in here in the state. The revenue increased, because you'll remember, emergency order six and seven kind of decreased the revenue last year.
Right.
Revenue that we're getting now is on par with what we would have had last year, which is more than we did have last year because of those emergency orders.
Yeah, I just was, I would like, if we can, if you can, not after this meeting, or provide to the group the relevance of how much the 30 million is teacher comp, and then from a teacher standpoint, teacher versus student ratio, and to make sure that we're still in line with the number of students per teacher, those kind of things, so we can understand what the cost per student really is.
Will do, I'll get that for you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. You started, I made a comment at the beginning there, Dr. Algués, that the states have banned online learning, it's just because of COVID and they've ceased using it, they've not actually banned it.
Yes, they, well, a lot of them, a lot of it was reported in the papers, as I said, most of it was in the Northeast. It's such a poor experience with it that they rushed to legislate it, you know, make it illegal pretty much to offer virtual education. So I think some of them are rethinking it, like Connecticut, for instance, and some of the others will probably be doing the same, they may realize that they may have rushed to judgment there. There is, if you do this right, it's really beneficial. And when I show them our scores compared to the statewide scores, and they see that we did better in just about every grade level, it's, you know, it's impressive, and quite a bit, double digits, it's impressive to see how effective it can be.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. So next item is the accreditation effort update. Our district accreditation takes place every five years. We are seeking reaccreditation with Cognia. It used to be called Saks and Cassie, and then Advanced Ed. They were the former accrediting organization, and now they have merged to become Cognia. The accreditation external review team will be visiting FLVS virtually February 28th through March 3rd, and during those four days, a series of events will be taking place, such as classroom observation, evidence reviews, interviews with multiple stakeholder groups. And these are a group of educators and others throughout the country who will be on that committee visiting us. Committee will be conducting one-on-one interviews with the Board of Trustees on February 28th. We will give you a specific time for when they plan on visiting with each of you, hopefully so we can have you available. We've been working to prepare for the visits by providing and attending training sessions and gathering evidence that aligns with each of the Cognia standards. We have three FLVS subcommittees organized by the Cognia Domains of Leadership, Learning, and Resources, and over the next couple of months, these committees will be finalizing the evidence review and identifying of individuals for interviews and classrooms observations. It's worthy to note that we started this about a year and a half ago, the process, and so they're culminating their efforts now. And we'll continue to keep you updated as Cognia visits nears.
Dr. A, are you gonna, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, Dr. A, you provide this group, the board members, with an executive summary prior to the interviews with Cognia?
Absolutely, and actually, prior to the interviews with Cognia, we'll go through, yes, exactly what you're asking for, the type of information that they'll be asking you.
So has self-study been submitted and approved by Cognia? And this is a virtual, this is a visit?
It's a visit, yeah, and they will provide us a report or an out, and the purpose of the visit is for our accreditation, they're the ones who are cred.
So have you had feedback from the self-study yet?
From the self-study?
Just, I mean, Saks, I know Saks, there's usually a self-study piece, and then there's a report on that, and then there's a site visit.
Yes, our internal folks will be wrapping up what they've done within a couple of months, by January, we'll have that next month, I guess, it's almost in December. And yes, we'll be giving you an overview of that, and then when the actual committee comes in, they'll do their review, and then they will give us a report on what they, commendations that they have and recommendations that they have in order for us to continually improve. That's the ultimate, the ultimate goal of this process is that, for us to be continuous.
And I just, for my own benefit, on the February 28th, if possible, my interview could be later in the day, because I'm returning, I'll be returning after a two-week trip to Singapore on the 27th.
You're gonna be exhausted, so we'll do that, we'll try to have them after your nap. Yes, we will.
So not at 8 o'clock in the morning meeting, if possible?
Nikki's making note of that to get through our team.
Dr. Adams, are these people, like, are they more virtually oriented? Because I know most of the time, they go into classrooms, so how do they know what to look for with you?
They have a virtual team.
Oh.
Specifically virtual accreditation, virtual entities.
Okay, okay.
And this is a re-accreditation, right, Dr. A?
Correct, yeah, we are currently accredited. All right.
That clarification.
All right, welcome. 4.5, we have Beth Brunner on board here, FLVS Foundation Manager, and she's going to provide the quarterly FLVS Foundation update with you all briefly. Beth, welcome aboard.
Morning, Dr. Algués, good morning.
Good morning.
We are actually full throttle at the conference with our baskets, with our sponsors, exhibitors, and we'll actually be having a foundation board meeting tomorrow at the conference. Baskets, what can I say about the baskets? There's 42 baskets, it's amazing, very, very involved with that, thanks to all the volunteers who did that. The other big thing is our teacher mini-grants. This is done annually to provide a unique valuable program for enhanced learning for students that we award teachers. This year, we had 35 grant applications, which is another new record. Those will be awarded on December 13th. Some of the business activities of the foundation involve meetings with interested parties who want to develop a relationship with the foundation and with FLVS. And what I mean by this is business opportunities where, for instance, Advent Health is very interested in promoting their priority, which is kids' mental health and behavior health. So they're, you know, they would like to get together with us to discuss opportunities to improve the mental health of kids, not just FLVS kids, but all kids. So these are things that the board will be discussing tomorrow at the meeting, along with their strategic plan for the next three years. And that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Beth.
Dr. A, I take it that mental health piece would be something that we would use our ESSR funds for?
The way I understand it, what they want to do is actually give us funds to help with improving mental health. So some of the things that I've talked with Beth about when we're talking to folks that want to work with our foundation is we want to make sure that they are philanthropic, that they want to do things to, not necessarily business opportunities in terms of us paying them to do something and then them giving us a donation afterwards, I don't think that looks good. So I've asked to avoid that type of thing. And if there's a purely philanthropic reason that somebody wants to give us funds to do something, then we're, you know, we're willing to go ahead and work with them. And from what I understand, in this example, is they want to go ahead and give us funds to help improve mental health.
No, I think it's a good thing to take in funds, but we do have those ESSR funds, and that's one of the categories, and ESSR to use on the mental health piece.
Yeah, we have our mental health allocation from the state, and we have put in for the ESSR funds, that's part of the other item that I mentioned, where we'll be getting input from the public and the stakeholders in how we're going to be using ESSR funds, and if that's a need, we'll absolutely be putting it there as well.
Also, just, over the years, how many laptops and technology do we provide to students in support of their needs?
Since I've been on the program, we've given out about 70 of the laptops, and each year, we'll do an announcement again, we used to just give them to full-time students. We do have a little bit of a cash still in reserves that we are giving out to those Flex students who have demonstrated need.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Where are we at with, how many board seats are filled and open, and what are we doing to help fill some of the empty seats?
We currently have eight board members. I said our goal would be approximately 11 over the course of a year and a half or two, so right now, we're looking for those remaining three candidates to bring before the Board of Trustees.
Anything we could do to help with that, I'm sure?
Absolutely, if you would like to submit or, you know, identify candidates, we appreciate
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it, Beth. Item 4.6, we had a successful launch of FlexPoint Education Cloud on October 6th, and we have Kate Lysot, Senior Director of Marketing and Communications. She's going to share with you an update on the results of the launch. And is Kate board here?
Yes, good morning, trustees. Very good to see you, everyone. Very good to see you all again. I'm here to provide an update since we last discussed our overall rebrand initiative for FLVS Global, which we successfully launched on October 6th, and rebranded our global services as FlexPoint. And with that, I just have a couple of highlights from looking at performance metrics from the first kind of 60 days of marketing activities and efforts. And with that, I'd like to just remind you that the typical sales cycle for kind of what we do is anywhere between 12 to 18 months. So the efforts that we're doing now will be our, will reap the benefits of down the road, but the kind of preliminary indicators are very strong. So for example, what we saw with the relaunch of the new brand and putting out our new website to the world, we saw tremendous increase in website traffic. A lot of that was generated from PR activity. I'll share some of those headlines that we saw as a result of outreach to reporters nationwide. We also had just a significant increase to all of our webpages as a result of the launch as well. And again, this is looking from October 6th to November 6th, that first kind of 30-day window of activity. Bruce, let you, there we go. We've also done quite a bit more with social media, specifically LinkedIn and Twitter. There, we saw an increase, 60% increase in engagement, kind of professionals engaging with the content that we were putting out. We put out why we rebranded, why it was important for this organization, and how we were helping school districts across the nation with that. Bruce, keep going. We also launched paid advertising efforts, which we've never had before. We've already generated millions of impressions, and our email campaigns that launched have been performing above industry standards in terms of open rates, which is really great measure. It just shows that being out there with the right message at the right time with the right audience really has kind of, it's engaging the right audiences with our organization out there. For publicity, we had a number of different press releases that we drafted, and we had also conducted a parent survey and a teacher survey, and we specifically asked them about their impressions with online learning and what their expectations were for the future. So the results of that study, we were able to publish and promote to reporters nationwide. And with that, we also published a couple of case studies, success stories, where we worked with several other states, such as Alaska Deed and the Michigan Grand Ledge. And those materials have been received very well, so Bruce, if you want to skip to the next line. We've had coverage that has generated over nearly 10 million media impressions in that very first 30-day window. We're still continuing to, we're still... We're still continuing to see, we're still doing media interviews almost every week and putting out um. Bylines, uh, so it's it it it's just really kind of given us. A lot of foundational base to now kind of stand and grow from. Okay. Um, internally, we announced the relaunch uh through a virtual uh series of um like a webinar series. And it was incredibly well attended. We had seventy four percent of our team members. Uh, all paid attention and engaged with the announcement of the rebrand. Uh, we had a ton of kind of visits to our internet site and just really kind of positive feedback. A lot of. I think we had over two hundred live comments and questions come in during the live webinar. Folks just excited about this next chapter for the organization. Um, we held our very first re fully rebranded uh virtual leadership training where we invite. Other school districts from across the country to participate um in a training. Uh, we had over eighty participants uh from twenty different states and even. A few folks from Argentina. Um, and with that, they were all very complimentary of um kind of where we're headed and how we're rebranding. So it was a very successful first fully rebranded event. And then we also had our uh first customer advisory panel. Um, our customer advisory panel consists of uh multiple clients that are currently with us. Um, this panel meets four times a year and they provide just tremendous feedback to us uh specifically around curriculum, curriculum development. What they're seeing in their local school district and such. So it's a very kind of, it it it's a very good group of professionals that were able to. Uh, get feedback from and ideas from. The customer advisory panel this past quarter really focused on. The marketing efforts that they are out doing out there to really build awareness for virtual education in a positive way. Um, and they uh really. Were grateful for us rebranding from FLVS Global to FlexPoint, and there was just a ton of. Uh, tremendous feedback, positive feedback from them as they felt strongly that it allows them now to really. Open more doors um without really having geographical boundaries in place.
On the the uh FlexPoint Virtual Leadership Training, um. Are those school districts that are interested in online? Education are are existing? They've already got online education and they're just.
It's exactly, it's um perspective school districts who are. Either have something kind of temporarily in place or they might have something in place, but they're looking to switch or improve, and they're. Attending these workshops has a way to just really gain a lot more knowledge and better understanding of what's possible.
Okay, good.
As far as the uh customer advisory, I really counsel, I like that. Um, is there any one, two or three things that were like aha moments that? Our customers had brought to your attention that we feel we're going to make a change on?
Um, because this one in particular focused on marketing, I think the biggest aha moment for all everyone there was. The fact that how the rebrand helped them is going to help them have their internal conversations with their kind of state policymakers as well, because there isn't that kind of. Geographic barrier that um they felt was there in in the past. It it's kind of like a percept perception thing that we hoped removed for them.
Okay, thank you.
And we do have these customer advisory panels periodically uh to discuss different things.
Yes, and they're they're different focus areas. So one of the upcoming ones for next quarter is going to be focused on curriculum specifically and kind of curriculum development.
Great, good, great idea.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Uh, further in this meeting, we have a resolution for FlexPoint to present to you for the uh board to approve. Uh, this concludes the C E O report. I now turn back over to you, Board Chair Watret.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Alguas. Uh, board members, any additional questions for Dr. Alguas on the the presentations? Hearing none, we will move on. So move on to the consent agenda. Uh, items five point one through six point one, and I'll turn it back over to you, Dr. Alguas.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we have five consent agenda items. Five point one through five point five, and as you mentioned, six point one after. For the board's consideration and approval, please note that agenda item five point four is revised to increase the spending authority for the workday contract. To add the adaptive planning modules. Five point one is a learning management system master reseller agreement, uh, contract with AgileX Labs Inc. Five point two is a co-location master services agreement, contract with ExecuNet. Google Voice uh user license is five point three uh with amplified I T. Increase in spend authority of existing contracts for Workday Inc. as mentioned, and I T P award for I T hardware or software. And five point five master service agreement for the licensing of mathematics online digital content. And uh that contract is with Colona Christian Center Society, D B A Study Forge. Uh, item six under. Uh, well, I'm sorry, we're gonna need the. Because the approval of the contracts. The omnibus approval.
Uh, okay, any uh.
I'm sorry, Board Chair, I also needed to include the annual reports and forms. We do have six point one, as we mentioned before. That's the quarterly staff data report that's.
Yeah.
Every quarter, and we're requesting approval for recommended actions for five point one to five point five and six point one. Forgive me for interrupting, sir.
Yeah, so moved, Mr. Chair.
All right, so we're there is a and just so that uh. Doctor Dagata, I'm following procedure. Is there an omnibus motion to adopt and approve the recommended actions on consent agenda, ten five point one through point five point five? And item six point one. Do I hear?
So moved, so moved.
Second.
I second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, so I'll motion pass unanimously. So um. Moving on to discussion agenda, we'll now move to discussion. Items at section seven of our agenda, Dr. Alguas.
Thank you. Seven point one is the FlexPoint Education, uh, FlexPoint Resolution that I mentioned prior. The proposed resolution expresses the board's support, encouragement, and approval of Florida Virtual School using FlexPoint. FlexPoint Education Cloud and FlexPoint Online Education is registered trademarks of FLVS, and Dr. David Dagata will walk you through this resolution.
So uh, thank you for that, and thank you, Dr. Watret, for that uh clarification on the omnibus. So so the resolution, this is something more uh ceremonial uh at board members, uh, as you all know. Uh, there was a great deal of work and analysis in uh looking at rebranding for out of state um commerce. Uh, and. As not to frustrate the grand reveal on the market. We figured that we would uh present this resolution after the 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 great reveal and that uh having been done. In early October. So really, the resolution is to announce before the whole world. Uh, the board's support uh for and the approval of. The usage of uh right here, FlexPoint. And our our other registered uh trademarks and names for purposes of out of state. Um, uh, business, as you have seen, it it really in each and every one of our uh meetings, but certainly today. Uh, during today's quarterly meeting. It is a competitive marketplace, okay, and uh Florida Virtual School has been in the marketplace. We've had uh statutory obligations for twenty years. Uh, it has been in statute for uh this organization and the board to aggressively seek. Uh, these opportunities to bring in revenues to to be self sustaining. You're seeing that come to fruition, and you're seeing that this leadership team. Uh, along with the board has paid close attention to to satisfying that obligation. And we were reminded of the obligation during what I call the reboot, the statutory reboot, a couple of years back. When the State Board of Education was the surrogate board for this uh organization. Uh, we had a twenty nineteen recommendations from the Department of Education. Uh, endorsed by the State Board of Education. Uh, one of them was, hey, let's pay attention. Uh, and 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 spread our wings in this out of state uh industry. Well, we have, and then came along COVID. And you see how the numbers uh uh spiked uh clearly on account of that. Um, the silver lining um to it. Was that it showed to this leadership team, and it has now shown to this board just how competitive we are. Uh, the pandemic has really underscored that, but has also underscored the confusion i- in the marketplace. Uh, some might say that uh various confusion is caused by competitors in in the out of state marketplace. Where folks don't really know who they're purchasing from. They know of FLVS, they know of the impeccable uh quality. Uh, you can see that it's marketable, and now we are really stretching our wings. And uh doing so through FlexPoint, through the face of FlexPoint Education Cloud. To clarify for states, you know, uh, like Alaska, Massachusetts, and Colorado, and so on and so forth. Hmm, why are we buying from a place called Florida Virtual School? Okay, that 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 gets a little bit confusing. Okay, and then others had really mimicked us, uh, Florida Virtual School. Um, so in order to cut through all of that confusion. Uh, and to s- spread our wings in this out of state industry, thereby bringing in. Monies from out of state, reducing uh the burden on tax dollars like we should have always done. We're finally doing it. This uh resolution uh announces the board's endorsement of that. So uh, as is stated in in this uh recommended action, we're we're looking. For the board to adopt and approve uh the board resolution.
Thank you, David, and with that, we request the approval of the recommendation for seven point one.
And I, you know, just as comment, you know, I the the FlexPoint and the marketing has gone behind it and and, you know, with the preliminary results of the the marketing campaign, it looks like it's very positive and. And I I agree, having this separating from Florida Virtual Schools for a for a market outside of Florida, it it does make a lot of sense to have this, and I think it's uh. You know, catchy as well in terms of FlexPoint to to keep that going. So I commend everyone that's been involved in in putting this together. So. With that, uh, and board, uh, board members, any other comments or questions on on this item?
I just want to say I second everything you just said. This is so impressive. So, good job, everybody.
Yep, I agree. I'll make a motion when you approve it, seven point one.
So uh, so motion adopt, uh, second.
I'll second.
Okay, and. So all now in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion, motion passes unanimously.
Hey, Mr. Chair, one one point of personal privilege on this issue, it's a. It's a simple motion for us to approve, but a lot, a lot of work went into this and. Want to make sure that I want to reiterate the comments that you made and other board members. Staff has done a great job. In putting this together, so congratulations to the team.
I do, I agree, and I.
I agree.
Should be recorded in our in our minutes, so thank you for that. Dr. Alguas, proceed to your next item.
All right, the next item are finance matters. Uh, we have four finance items for board discussion. Judith Marte, our chief financial officer, will be reviewing these items, and the first is eight point one, an amendment to the twenty twenty one twenty two budget. Judith.
Thank you, Dr. Al Gaze. Good morning, board members. Our first item eight point one. We have a proposed first amendment to to the twenty one twenty two FLVS adopted budget. The major impact of the amendment is to recognize F E F P revenue from F L D O E and the amount of fifteen point two million and the related appropriations for staff and benefits.
Thank you, Judith. Uh, we request your approval for the recommended action on item eight point one.
And board members, any comments? It seems straightforward. Is there motion to adopt the recommended action on agenda item five eight point one?
I'll make the motion to adopt.
Second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Alguas.
Thank you. I think member Bozuali also said aye, but it's he was muted there.
The answer is aye.
Thank you. Uh, next is eight point two, an adjustment to fiscal year twenty twenty one twenty two base salary of support staff. Judith, please walk the board through this item.
Yes, sir. Uh, board members, this item is um. To cover staff not so um previously covered by board action. Under the teacher's salary um instructional allocation. The purpose of this agenda item. Is to request approval for a two percent annual salary increase adjustment for all staff not covered under the fiscal year twenty one twenty two. Teacher's Salary Increase Allocation Plan, or T S I A, which was previously approved by the board. The cost of the two percent increase is approximately one point four million and is included in the adopted budget.
Thank you, Judith, and we request your approval of the recommended action on item eight point two.
Board members, any any comments on this? Hearing none, uh, kind of motion to approve uh recommended action, I agenda item eight point two?
I'll make a motion. Will you approve that?
Second, a second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. So motion carries unanimously. Okay, Dr. Alguas.
Thank you. Uh, next is eight point three, a compensation adjustment for instructional personnel. Judith, please walk the board through this item.
This eight point three, this item adjusts instructional personnel compensation for fiscal year twenty one twenty two as follows. For instructional personnel with service years um between five and nine, the adjustment proposed is one thousand dollars. Service years ten through fourteen, the adjustment proposed is two thousand dollars, and service years of fifteen or more, the adjustment is three thousand dollars. Those service years are calculated. With time uh at FLVS.
Thank you, Judith. We request your approval of the recommended action on item eight point three.
And this, this uh, these increases are one time increase to come to to um balance out the adjustments who are made to all the salaries last year, right?
So the the contracts here are annual, so this is for this fiscal year. Um, as we get to each fiscal year, we have to approach each contract annually.
So and so it's it's just a single, single increase, and it says retro to July one of twenty twenty one, so that uh. For that, and. So so on this contract year that they're getting this money, that's that's from us.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, good. Any comments?
I have a question. How many, how many teachers do you have that actually have fifteen or more years? Is that a big number? I mean, that's specifically.
Have that, do you have that handy, Judy?
It's several hundred, it's several hundred.
There is that many, okay.
Yes.
I was just curious, okay.
We can, we can follow up. We have the actual um disaggregated data by group. Um, the majority of our teachers have less than five years of service, but there are some pretty good numbers, five and above. We can get that information to the board, Dr. Al Gaze.
Thank you.
That's true. Five years of service at Florida Virtual School, that that is the correction.
Right, yeah.
So is there a motion to adopt the recommended action on agenda item eight point three?
I'll make the motion to adopt.
Yeah, here a second.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes unanimously. Dr. Alguas, eight point four.
Thank you. Our last finance item, eight point four proposes a new salary schedule for information technology. Uh, we'd also like to note that in item eight point four, we updated the schedule to reflect. Reflect five positions that were accidentally omitted dealing with web development. Uh, Judith, please walk. Judith, please walk the board through the last item.
This item requests approval of the IT salary schedule for fiscal year 2122 in order to remain competitive with the market and continue important work on the IT roadmap. We continue to have a difficult recruiting and a difficult time recruiting and retaining IT staff. This item, as proffered, plans to address that issue. The cost of the salary schedule adjustment proposed is approximately 1.1 million dollars.
And I s- I assume these were, there's this the benchmark against some 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 data that you have to show that they're
Yes, we had. We had an analysis of the external cost for these equivalent type positions in the industry.
Okay. Any further discussion from board members?
As for to avoid Dr. Dagata's yelling at me, we request your approval for the recommended action on item eight point four.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the recommended action on agenda item eight point four?
I'll make the motion to adopt.
Second.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Algas.
Thank you. Next up, we have number proposed FLVS board policies, policy revisions and repeals for the first reading. We were accustomed to board's authorization to publish the text and provide public notice of adhering to these proposed policies, policy revisions and repeals. David Dagata will be reviewing these with you, David.
So just to recap, and and by the way, I would only yell at Dr. Alguas virtually. When we're in person, I would never do that. He'd never hear me anyway, because it's just so much taller, better, higher latitude. Anyway, so so nine point one is really seeking authorization to publish the proposed changes to our improvements, vast improvements to to the board's policies. These again kind of recapping where we were at the workshop. There's 27 policies in all that we would like to put out there and publish. They are, again, heavily most of them are directed to student related policies. Attendance, graduation requirements, code of conduct, so on and so forth. And these things change over time anyway. And we'll, of course, bring back to you from time to time various these policies. But as you know, I just want to reiterate. We have never had them in board policies, student oriented board policies. And I got to hand it to the subject matter experts, the the executive directors, directors that you you all have talked with from time to time. And our good Bruce Moore, got to give him a shout out. And the deputy general counsel Karen Chastain, who I stole from a former workplace of ours, has done a tremendous job with with these policies, bringing them to you, working them through the subject matter experts. So there's 19 of the student related ones. There are a handful of enterprise wide related policies, some new, some revisions. Okay. And they they deal with anti discrimination, Title IX, so on and so forth. These are things that are imposed as a matter of not only state law, but federal law to have them integrated into the policies of the governing board. And so we would ask for authorization to publish the proposed changes.
Okay. And I know a lot of work has gone into to doing these and it is and that's why we have lawyers. It's tedious work going through all these policies and making sure that make the change and everything. So I do appreciate the hard work that's been put into them. Board members, any any questions on these changes? Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt and approve the recommended action on the agenda item nine point one?
Would I would move to publish.
Second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. We'll now move to board's consideration of the proposed policies and policies and policy revisions set for the public hearing. As board chair, I hereby open the public hearing on an agenda item 10 point one. Proposed Florida Virtual School Board Policies, Policy Revisions and Repeals. Rather than retaking roll call, I note that for the record that I'm accompanied by co-chair Ryder, board member Cornhans and board member Boswali, who are also in attendance at this hearing. The purpose of this hearing is to discharge board's obligation under Florida law and to provide the greatest degree of transparency pertaining to the development and adoption of Florida Virtual School Board Policies. The subject of this hearing is the board's consideration and potential adoption of changes to its policies. The board earlier authorized publication of the entire text of the proposed policies and repeals before us today. And it also direct public notice to the date and time of this public hearing. Now, having been duly and publicly noticed noticed in accordance with Florida law, the proposed policies, policy revisions and repeals are before the board for further consideration and final action. Specifically, we are asked to adopt the proposed policies, policy revisions and repeals described in attack in in and attached to agenda item nine point one. Accordingly, board will take up public comment at this time. Public speakers are reminded to observe the following rules. Public comments must be pertinent to the proposed policy and repeals. Each speaker is limited to a two minute comment period and cannot yield time to another speaker. If a speaker wishes to register additional comments beyond the two minute period, the speaker may do so in writing in accordance with applicable board policies and bylaws. Speakers must state their first and last name before delivering comments. Speakers may ask questions, but board members and Florida Virtual School officials are not required to respond. Rather, it shall be their prerogative to respond. The board chair will consider taking up any such responses after the public hearing is closed. Finally, speakers are reminded that this meeting, including the hearing, is being recorded. Thank you. Operator, are there any members of the public who have called in and wish to speak to the board on this item 10 point one?
We have no callers, sir.
Thank you. This concludes the public comment portion of this hearing. Board members, do you have any question or comments? Hearing none. Dr. Algas, do you have any comments before we take up a vote?
No, we just request your approval for the recommended action on 10 point one.
Okay, thank you. Is there an omnibus motion to adopt the recommended action on agenda item 10 point one?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. So this concludes the discussion agenda portion of our meeting. Next, we'll turn to the general counsel for any comments, reports and presentations. Dr. Dagata.
You know, I can't pass up an opportunity to talk. So so look, this is a season of thanks. See, I got the I got the nod from from board member Boswali on that one. I'm going to tell you, I'm still on a turkey hangover. I don't know about you. Somehow, some way, I was able to smoke a turkey and my little egg came out wonderfully. And my kids, for the first time, actually indulged in turkey. So we're all on a hangover here and we'll be eating turkey for at least the next week. But seriously, in this season of thanks, I've got to thank everyone here. It's been a tremendous, tremendous gift to be part of this group. And I'll tell you, next time, board member Ryder, you were you were mentioning I three. We're gifted to have this opportunity to meet with our folks from across the United States, really. Certainly across Florida to meet up for a three day professional in service, professional development in service program that is tremendous. It is just a tremendous. Look, I I came in in September 2019 and I experienced my first in service, FLVS in service, a month or so later, and it was just a real wow to me. And and I'm looking forward to it again in today through December two, I believe it is. So and we would encourage the board. Next time we have an at bat with I three, it would be wonderful to get together with board members to include Dr. Watret. We're happy that Dr. Watret can can join us. We know it's it's the tough slog to get to Orlando from various points of Florida. Next time, we've got to do it. That's I just want to encourage everyone to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dagata. Thank you, David. Board members, any questions for our general counsel?
And clearly, if you missed the meeting, you get to go to Burger King.
Yeah, that's that's the consolation, right? You get to go to get a Ching sandwich.
I agree with what you said. I would not the Burger King part.
We would never do that to you. We'd never do that to you.
I haven't eaten nothing against Burger King. It's just been many, many years. But I'd love to go to that in service next year, whenever, you know, you have it. So, yeah.
Around November.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Now turning back to Dr. Algas, any closing remarks?
I had a lot, but since David went before me, I'll spare you all, although I would like to tell David I'd rather eat a turkey than smoke one. But for the board, I'd like to thank you for your for the virtual school. Don't hesitate to reach out to us for anything you might need. We'll get the answers to you soon after this meeting for the two questions that we had earlier. And we will be reaching out to schedule some individual meetings in the future prior to the accreditation meetings and prior to our next quarterly board meetings. So once again, thank you all. It's a pleasure working with you. I I'm always raving about our board to everybody who listens. So thank you.
Thank you. And and, you know, again, I just want to say thank you to all the the staff, the college virtual school staff that make make this very easy for us in terms of preparing all the documents and and the transparency and clarity of everything that you do. It it really is an easy, easy position to go through the information and make judgment on them for the support of of what you're doing in support of the teachers and the students. So so thank you. Board members, any closing remarks, Ms. Ryder?
Two things. The FlexPoint is amazing and I just want to make sure that I make note of that. And also for Dr. Dagata, that all that work that you guys and your team did on those very, I know that's very taxing work. And so thank you so much for that. And to the whole team. I want to wish everybody a wonderful holiday season, whatever you celebrate, enjoy it and a very healthy and happy new year because that's even more important than everything else. But it's been a pleasure. I mean, I'm not dying. I'm just saying it's been
Thank you.
And a great holiday season.
Thank you. Board member Cornhans?
Well, she took a lot of my words out of my mouth, so I just did what Linda said, and it's just great to be part of this whole organization and I'd love to see growth and new ideas flourish and, you know, the the reception of FlexPoint is awesome. So we got our base business and now the global with FlexPoint. Really proud of the team. Thank you.
Okay. Board member Boswali?
I don't want to repeat what was already been said by my fellow board members, but thank you to Dr. A and the team. Really do appreciate it and I wish everybody a happy and healthy holiday season.
And I will conclude with that as well. I mean, I hope everyone does have a happy and holiday time and a healthy and prosperous new year. I mean, we we've come through a lot in the last year with with what's going on with COVID and it certainly has benefited Florida Virtual Schools in some ways, but we do want to get beyond COVID and and I think what we've got in place is going to benefit the future of K through 12 education and beyond. Because online education is here to stay and there's a lot of benefits for it. So all the work that you do behind to do that and benefit it, really appreciate it. So with that, I is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right. So the motion carries. This concludes the meeting. And again, thank you to everyone and all the dedicated staff that work for the students and the families. And and I know speaking for all the board members, you have them individually as well. We are very proud to be part of the organization in support of what you're doing. So thank you all.
Thank you.